Franklin County Community Corporation, regular meeting, Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Today's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Elliott and his family, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We'll start with a roll call. Gavin Kaiser here, Jessica Brennan.
Here.
Greg Burris.
Here.
Beth Foster.
Here.
Katie Holman.
Here.
Kim Simonsen.
Here.
Randy Wilson.
Here.
Next, we are going to have a flight change to the agenda that we will just approve that and approve the agenda moving forward. We're going to move one item from New Business, dedication, and we're going to move that right after celebrations. So somebody make a motion.
So we're going to have first a second discussion and then a vote to move the agenda item, New Business A, to the top. You have first?
I'll so move, please.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, right hand? Seven of them?
Do you have that paper? She can't get anything.
Nope, you're good. Sorry.
Sorry.
Next, we will move to celebrations. Mr. Gearing.
Well, thank you for that. Obviously, we want to make sure we're making good time and making things effective for everyone that's our visitor here today. We are, we have a couple celebrations for the evening. We're going to start with our Support Staff of the Month, okay? And with our Support Staff of the Month for the month of October is Allison Brinkman. Let's welcome her with a round of applause. Come on up here, stand by me. Don't worry, I blocked the camera. You're okay. All right. Franklin County Community School Corporation is proud to recognize Ms. Allison Brinkman, Nurse at Franklin County Middle School, as the Support Staff of the Month for October. Although Ms. Brinkman has been with FCCSC for just one year, her impact has already been deeply felt by students, family, and staff alike. Her compassion, we like kids here, okay? That's what we're all about. Her compassion, professionalism, and dedication have made her an essential part of the Franklin County Middle School team. A graduate of NKU with a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, Ally brings both clinical expertise and a heart for service to her role. She was nominated for this recognition by a grateful parent who shared my son, and then there's some things in here about her son that is particular, but I'm going to kind of skip through those. Those are for her to know. But from here, Ally has shown my son and I nothing but patience, kindness, and love. My son is comfortable with her doing his injections, and she has his trust. She is quick to respond to any messages from me and also to his needs at school. She is a five star. I love that. Beyond her work in the school, Ally is an active member of the Community Church of Batesville and supports other local organizations when time permits. In her free time, which probably doesn't get a lot of that, but in her free time, she enjoys gardening, traveling, and spending time outdoors with her husband and three children. She's also an adventurous foodie, fun, especially when it comes to trying new sushi. Okay. When asked what she enjoys most about her role, Ms. Brinkman shared, "The best part of my job is building rapport with students in order to help support and educate them. I love helping students with new health challenges or just being a safe space when it is needed." And I would just add one other piece to this. Every time I walk into the middle school past our office, it is a smiling face that is, that is there greeting me no matter what's happening. And, and to her credit, Mr. Mr. Gearing kind of played a trick on her. So at lunch, I got on the radio and I called for an emergency in the cafeteria, and, and of course she came running because of course she would, and she runs into a room full of clapping students who were just excited to celebrate her, and she was very mad at me just for a minute, and then she definitely got over that, but I appreciate that as well. I know you got your hands full, but what I'm going to tell you is this is going to be for you, okay? And then also, we have one of these for you as well, okay? That will be for you as well. But for right now, what I'd love for you to do is take a moment and tell us who is with you today.
All right. So I have my two-year-old daughter Shelby, my five-year-old son Elliot, and my husband Tyler.
Well, we're thankful that you let us borrow her every single day. How about one more big round of applause as I send you around?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And stick around, we'll grab some pictures in just a few minutes, okay? All right, next up is our Educator of the Month. I'd like to welcome up Ms. Heather Chamberlain with a round of applause. Welcome Heather. Right here next to me. Franklin County Community School Corporation is thrilled to shine a spotlight on Heather Chamberlain for October's Educator of the Month. Mrs. Chamberlain serves as the art teacher at Mount Carmel School and Franklin County Middle School. Though she has been a valued member of the FCCSC team for just two years, she brings nineteen years of teaching experience to her classroom. A graduate of Morehead State University, she holds a Bachelor of Arts in Art with teacher, with a teacher certification pre-K-12. Known for her calm presence, kindness, and ability to connect with students from all backgrounds, Mrs. Chamberlain was nominated for this honor by one of her own students, which is one of my favorites. The student wrote, "I enjoy Ms. Chamberlain's class because it's a good time in the middle of the day to relax and just enjoy art. She's also inspired me to be more artistic. I even started painting." The reason I would like to nominate her is because there was this one time when another student I sat next to was feeling insecure about herself. She was talking bad about herself. Ms. Chamberlain took the time to make sure that she was okay and even let her go to the office for as long as she needed. As she was doing this, many kids were asking her questions and walking around her, but she stayed calm and focused on the students' needs. I feel she truly deserves Educator of the Month. In addition to her classroom contributions, Ms. Chamberlain is actively involved in the school and local community. She's a member of both the Art Education Association of Indiana and the National Art Education Association. She also supports student engagement through her involvement with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, or FCA, at Franklin County Middle School. Outside of school, she enjoys traveling, trying new recipes, coloring, and listening to My Brother's Keeper. When asked what she enjoys most about teaching, Ms. Chamberlain shared, "Every day is different. I love that I get to play with art supplies all day long. I love building relationships with the kids and having them feel comfortable enough to talk to me about anything. I enjoy connecting with students who struggle in traditional academic settings and watching them find their voice through mastering skills and developing creativity." They didn't even know they had, that they didn't even know they had. I love what I do. And in the words of Mark Twain, he's well quoted, okay, well done. Absolutely. In the words, this is the first time, that's pretty impressive. In the words of Mark Twain, "If you love what you'll do, what you do, you'll never work a day in your life. At the end of the day, what I enjoy most is seeing students come into the art room and not want to leave, knowing that I am providing them a place they feel cared for." FCC is honored to celebrate Ms. Heather Chamberlain's dedication, talent, and the, and the meaningful difference she makes in our students' lives. In just a moment, I'm going to hand you this, as well as one of these, okay? But for right now, would you mind telling us who you brought with you today?
I brought my mom, Norma, and my husband, Drew.
Thank you so much for joining us as well. How about one big round of applause for Ms. Chamberlain?
Congratulations. Love your curriculum. Throw in something besides painting and art. Love it, love it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
She's kind of waving.
Oh, that's good. Thank you so much. And we'll do some pictures in just a few minutes, okay? All right, next up, I want to welcome up Mr. Liggett. Mr. Liggett is going to talk to us through what is a program spotlight. It's a new concept here, where we're going to bring forth a program at a school each month to kind of inform the board as well as the community about what's happening in our building and what's exciting out there. So with that, I want to turn these over to Mr. Liggett, who's welcome in with a big round of applause as well.
I'll tell you what, every time I'm here, it's, it gets harder and harder to follow someone like that when he, when he talks about accolades from people, but I'll do my best here. But I brought with me a few people, and these people are table leaders during lunchtime, and something new that we, we tried this year compared to last year. And by the way, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for, and Superintendent Gearing for giving us the opportunity to be here today. Brought with me eighth grade students Camden Creek, Aubrey White, and then Harper Manus. Harper is a seventh grader, and they come to talk about what it means to be a table leader here in a few minutes. But before that, over the summer, I had the opportunity to attend a Behavior Management Conference. It was a three-day conference sponsored by Franklin County Schools. The speaker, Scott Irvin, was there, and he related it basically to the, the middle school slash elementary-aged student. And attending with me is Mrs. Royce, Mrs. Hoag, Mrs. Riffle, and Mrs. Tanya Edwards. And I was curious to see how the behavior management that worked so perfectly in a conference could relate to middle school students. And if you didn't know, middle school is kind of the toughest time there is in, in anyone's education. The core idea was to improve student behavior by giving students ownership during lunchtime. We introduced a new system where students were allowed to choose their own table leader. These leaders were responsible for monitoring their table's behavior and ensuring the area was cleaned up after lunch. If they did their job, then certain rewards would happen. If they didn't, then they would be fired and replaced by another table leader. By the way, none of these were fired. If fired, then the person being fired would have to train the next person. And by the way, there weren't very many kids fired. I actually fired no kids. Some of the kids fired themselves from their job. The reward, tables are dismissed to recess, and yes, seventh and eighth graders get recessed this year, based on their behavior and cleanliness. The better the table performed in these areas, the earlier they were allowed to leave. So not a big deal in the big picture, but it is a big deal in relation to getting out of the building and going to recess. The results were impressive. Here's what we noticed, a significant decrease in negative behaviors from years previous, cleaner tables, which is obvious, a noticeable improvement in the overall cleanliness of the overall cafeteria. The cafeteria seemed to be less loud, and there were more positive student engagement times. And finally, there was a dramatic change in the behavior for the positive of our students who last year were known to make poor choices. This simple shift in responsibility not only encouraged accountability, but also fostered leadership and cooperation among our students. We're excited about the positive impact this year and look forward to building on the success for next year. So I invited our representatives from the middle school, which are our table leaders, to kind of talk about what they perceived as being a table leader looked like, and I'd like Camden to come up here and, and talk to you about his perceptions.
What has been the most challenging part of the role? To me, the most challenging part of the role is making sure everybody stays respectful to everybody at the table, because when you're eating lunch, it's real easy to forget about the person sitting next to you, even if you're not best friends with them. It's really hard to like include them in every conversation, and making sure, for me as a table leader, to make sure to include them in every conversation is very vital for that. What kind of responsibilities do you have as a table leader? Some responsibilities include keeping the table clean, keeping people respectful, like I said earlier, making sure everybody cleans their food or respects people that made it. I think that's really important for me. Other respectful things is to make sure that if you see someone down with themselves, you can always help them. There are also other ones, but that's all I got.
If someone at my table isn't following the rules, I'll make sure to let them know. So make sure to let them know that they can do better next time. And being a good table leader to me means that I make sure everyone's respectful, like Camden said, and I make sure that everybody cleans up their food and making sure that everybody is just respectful to the people that made the food, like Camden said.
Last but not least, Ms. Harper.
I think that three important character traits of being a table leader are confidence, reliability, and being able to take accountability. Confidence is important, that way you can stand up for someone, for yourself, or for someone else at your table if they are being bullied or someone else is not including them in certain situations, or if you feel that you are not, like you feel that you are not getting exactly what you need for your table. Reliability is important because you need, for your table leader, you need someone who you'll be able to rely on in situations where you might need a message, message to be communicated across to the table. Accountability is important because you need someone to take accountability for the table if it's clean or if it's not clean. The person, the table leader, has to be able to take accountability either way, even if it is or it's not clean, because that was their job.
All right, there's our representatives from the middle school for table leaders this year. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Can I kind of circle back a little bit? I may be a little bit out of line, so I apologize, but I'm thinking Harper, at the end of the year last year, wasn't you a principal's award candidate?
She was. She was, she was the candidate and she was the recipient of the award, yes.
Sounds like it's going well.
Yeah, and like I said before, with middle school, you just, you just don't know the outcome of new initiatives, and by the way, one thing I did not mention is each table leader got these bracelets, which says Wildcat Leader on it, which we're going to present to you here in just a minute when we come around and shake your hands. But we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk about good things at the middle school.
So team, as you, as you are aware, the Kid Whisperer Conference, we brought you here this summer, a national speaker, and Trent and his team came to spend three days of, of their own summer to, to pick up these strategies. And, and I know, I saw him and Heidi were like way deep into like trying to figure out how can we make this work at the middle school? And what I've seen so far is exceptional. We've seen a dramatic change in some of the behaviors at the middle school, already started last year and carried over again this year with new strategies. And so things like this really, really matter, and leaders like this really, really matter. You are the future of Franklin County, so we appreciate you very, very much. I'd like to shake your hand first. Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you. And I'm going to send you around to drop off our bracelets, and let's give you a round of applause.
Excellent job of speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
It's okay. I take it too long.
Very impressive. And you, I'm so proud of you. You had some jobs in the middle school or elementary.
Thank you.
Job problem. No, I mean, just in class, right? But you are a leader now, and that is awesome, right? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful job.
You guys get a bracelet?
Yes.
Harper, now slow down. You tell your grandma, grandma, you're coming.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you.
Very impressive.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you very much. Thank you. See you.
As we stated earlier, we're going to jump ahead a little bit and go to New Business Item A.
Absolutely. So naming of the practice soccer field is New Business Item A. So here is what I am recommending. Dustin Gearing recommends the approval of the naming of the Franklin County High School practice soccer fields as the Bob O'Brien soccer fields in honor of Mr. Bob O'Brien, who's with us, as well as his family and friends, right back here. This recommendation is made in recognition of Mr. O'Brien's significant and longstanding service, dedication, and contributions to the Franklin County Community Schools, our athletic programs, particularly the Franklin County Community School program, soccer program, and the broader community. The recommendation comes from the Franklin County Youth Soccer League, so that's the organization that brought it forward, and it comes out of our committee from the FCCSC Athletic and ECA Committee. And just as you, everyone knows, you know, the time to get to here was just us figuring out what are the rules and how do we want to do this? And so our committee did a great job of pulling all that together, and so now we have something that could drive us to the future. So on behalf of the Athletics and ECA Committee, as well as the Franklin County Community Soccer Program, I would like to recommend Mr. Bob O'Brien of the field to be named Mr. Bob O'Brien Soccer Field in honor of Mr. Bob O'Brien. The official naming ceremony will be held in the spring, but with that being said, it is time for our first, second questions or discussion, and then board action.
I'll move to accept the recommendation.
Do you have a second? Foster, any discussion?
I'd like to point out the, the timing, like you said, as we were figuring out the process, the long, impressive list, dedication, accomplishments, that, that was brought to us on behalf of, on behalf of Bob O'Brien, a lot of dedication to the community, and that doesn't go unnoticed.
Yeah, I, I could say a lot, I guess, but I've known Bob since about seventy-four, I believe, when I first came to Brookville, so, and he has dedicated himself overwhelmingly to so many things, not just school affiliated, but community affiliated. This is a super, this is a super choice for this gentleman, so.
I'd like to add to that. Not only has he given many, many hours to the community, but also he's the one still, over at the soccer field with Kathy, still taking things, putting things up and taking them down, and still giving the opportunity to our young soccer players. And this is the first time, or sometimes when the little ones play, that's the first time they've been on a team. So it's chaotic, and I don't know how he does it, but. I mean, Bob, how many, three hundred, you saw him this year?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you, because as they're talking about soccer and youth, I was one of those young soccer kids that played along with my brother, so thank you. I mean, I looked forward to always going on Saturday mornings and playing soccer, and it created knowledge in me as I grew up to know about the sport. So as I went on to teaching in PE, I was very knowledgeable, so thank you for that. Thank you for that opportunity.
I would like to add to that, that to Bob's humbleness, just coming the last few years, asking for the needs of the soccer field, not for himself, but for the needs of the children, and looking for ways that he could better our community, and watching the children that we're connected with that are part of that program. I just appreciate him so much.
I will say thank you to Rob Allen and Miss Mitchell and everyone else involved in the recommendation, the committee for a lot of discussion that went into this, but in the end, it's thanks to Mr. O'Brien for his time and dedication. If there are no other questions, we will look to them. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven of them. Congratulations.
Mr. Brian, right with you. I'd like to bring him up for just a second, just to kind of, just take a moment, I, I have two pages worth of, of actions, and, and I, I don't want to read all of them because we'll be here all night, but I, I will, I will say to you, when you go back to nineteen seventy-three as a list of things that you've been doing in this community, that's pretty incredible. I was born in seventy-eight. And so to, to know that you have done my lifetime and then some in a place like this, just contributing in all kinds of ways, all kinds of places for the, for the youth, honestly, for, for children is incredible. And I think the most incredible thing for me was, as I called you to invite you to this meeting, you were literally on the soccer field amongst all kinds of other children, and we could barely even talk to each other because it was, it was so much happening. But to know that you're still doing this is absolutely incredible. And so on behalf of a grateful community, thank you, thank you, and please don't stop, but thank you. We absolutely need you. And for those who are listening or could be inspired by something like this, just know it matters. It really does matter when you jump in. So lastly, I just want to say thank you, congratulations, and I'm going to send you around for some handshakes. Thank you, sir. Absolutely. One more round of applause.
Thanks, Bob. We never would have gotten it done.
Okay, we're going to pause, and now we take some pictures along the way, okay? Because Mr. O'Brien is already up on his feet, we're going to go ahead and bring his family on up. Everyone who's here with Mr. O'Brien, come on up. I'm going to have you step right over here, we'll take a picture, and we'll make a face. And then we'll take this picture, and then we'll take a picture with your family. All right, everyone else, gather around.
Lauren's pregnant again. How many kids Lauren have now?
I mean, he hasn't been my neighbor my entire life.
Yeah, probably two rows.
This is a lovely group.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, but it's also okay to take this man out for ice cream. That's okay. All right, next up, we're going to have our Staff of the Month, and we'll have them come on up, so we'll have, Heather, why don't you come on up? We'll take a picture with yourself and then with your family.
Thank you.
You are more than welcome to stay, but it's also okay to take this man out for ice cream. That's okay. All right, next up, we're going to have our Staff of the Month, and we'll have them come on up, so we'll have, Heather, why don't you come on up? We'll take a picture with yourself and then with your family.
Thank you.
You are more than welcome to stay, but it's also okay. All right, next we'll have Allison, come on up. All right, and family. Oh, there it is. Very good, very good. Thanks, guys. And lastly, we're going to have our leaders come on over, our leadership program. Mr. Liggett, you're going to give us a picture. I'll take a picture for you. Oh, there you go.
We have Tucker, too, but he has the whole class. Tucker's not today, sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Say bye. You do have purple on, you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can't believe he's not here. Jerry Lismas, I would know, or they've been here. Grandparents, you know grandparents are all right, Bill.
Right, Kim. I think I'm upset, but Wendy had her, she was.
You do have purple on. You do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can't believe that he's not here. Jerry Lismas, I would know, or they've been there.
Yes.
Grandparents, you know, grandparents are all right, Bill.
Right, Kim. I think I'm upset, but Wendy had her, and she was.
You know why, too.
She's come out to be a very good leader. I know. Did you see her look at it? Oops.
All right, sir, then we are back to top when you're ready.
Okay. We will back up a little bit, and next is the consent agenda items, the minutes, expenditures, and resignations. Need a first, second, discussion, and vote.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
Ms. Brennan, do we have a second? Ms. Foster, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Now, we have internal position changes.
So, that actually is a part of the consent agenda item?
Yeah.
Nope. You're all good. But the board will be, just notice, we wanted to try something a little bit different to make sure we're communicating well. You will see a resignation letter out of one position, but not necessarily a new hire position, so we didn't want any confusion, so we created a new item under just internal position changes, this person just shifting over, and so that came through the board. So, you know what's going on there.
I apologize. I thought you wanted to do that.
No, you're fine.
Moving on to personnel, new hires.
All right, we have three. Kendra Thompson, media specialist, assistant, and paraprofessional LES. Jalen Rogers, welcome back, teacher at LES. Jody Smith, paraprofessional at FCHS. I need a first, second, discussion, and vote.
I'll move to approve the new hires.
Ms. Brennan, do we have a second? Ms. Holman, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Personnel extracurricular.
At BES, we have Madison Roberts, yearbook sponsor. Marcy Kazer, student council. Janine Higginbotham, ooh, how did I do on that one? Recycling club. At MCS, we have Alison Cochran, co-athletic director. Rachel Tussie, co-athletic director. Alan Craver, band director. Alison Cochran, yearbook sponsor. Hannah Cole, web page director. Chad Bolser, robotics coach. Going on, FCMS has Candace Kurtvall, sixth grade band instructor. FCHS, Tanya Wertz, yearbook co-sponsor. Lucy Cook, yearbook co-sponsor. Brad Stacy, assistant athletic director. Justin Leising, head varsity wrestling coach. Danny Payne, varsity assistant wrestling coach. Austin Miller, JV assistant wrestling coach. Lenny Sizemore, volunteer assistant wrestling coach. Cole Freeze, volunteer assistant wrestling coach. A.J. Huber, volunteer assistant wrestling coach. With that, list, a first, second, discussion, and vote.
I move that we accept that.
Ms. Foster, do we have a second? Ms. Holman, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Item G, grants and donations.
Heidi Royce, assistant principal at FCMS, is requesting permission to accept a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Franklin County Community Foundation discretionary fund to be used for purchasing ILEARN student supplies. That requires a first, second, discussion, and vote. I'll move.
Mr. Simonsen, do we have a second? Ms. Wilson? Any discussion? I just, I want to make a comment, just thank you to all the organizations that provide us with grants and donations. It is very helpful, and that's one reason I love that we recognize them. It truly helps the school and the students, so. No other discussion? Raise your right hand. Seven oh. Field trip requests.
On six, nine, of twenty-five, at the board meeting, it was approved that the FCHS banned travel to Missouri during spring break of twenty-six. John Johnson, FCH, FCHS band director, has informed us that this trip will no longer include Branson due to the high cost. This trip will primarily be in St. Louis. And just to make sure we had everything covered, we wanted to bring it back to the board because it did get amended so much. But with that being said, I need a first, second, discussion, and vote for the amended field trip.
This is bus, right? They're traveling by bus?
Correct.
So, moved.
Ms. Foster, do we have a second? Ms. Holman, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Next is financial reports with Ms. Kendra.
The education fund balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, was six million, nine hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and forty-seven cents. A year ago, this balance was six million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. The operations fund balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, was five hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. A year ago, this balance was three million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. The rainy day fund balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, was four million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. A year ago, this balance was one million, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. The investment interest earned year-to-date as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, was three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and four cents. This is compared to four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents a year ago. And just as clarification, we received all of the interest that was owed to us from the last month and being over the weekend. We got two deposits from all of our FCN banks in the month of September, so we're all caught up.
This is for discussion only. If nothing, we'll move on. Cafeteria report.
The cafeteria fund balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, was fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. This is compared to three hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-four cents a year ago. And the latch key fund balance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, was fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. This is compared to twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents a year ago.
Again, this is discussion only. If none, we'll move on. Item D, resolution.
Do you want me to read? Go ahead.
I can do it. Part of the budget process for the twenty twenty-six budget is to, Mr. Dustin Garing, superintendent, and myself are recommending a resolution for the superintendent, for the superintendent of schools or designate to attend the budget hearings and to be allowed to make appropriate changes to the lines, one or two of the submitted state budget in all funds at any time during the budget process if necessary, as well as a resolution to make transfers from the education to operations fund up to one million, two hundred thousand during the twenty twenty-six calendar year. The first part of this is the resolution for the changes to the budget. As I've informed the board, we always budget a little high to make sure that we max the levy. We always aim to keep the tax rate neutral and the same. Therefore, if any adjustments need to be done, I will do so to make sure that the tax rate stays neutral. The second part of this is the resolution to transfer. We are allowed, Indiana code, to make transfers from the education to operations fund, and this resolution allows myself to be able to do that. I usually always bring it to the board before any of that, or to the committee before it's done, and I will continue to do that.
Just need a first, second, discussion, and vote.
I'll move.
Mr. Simonsen, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brennan, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. And last for Ms. Kendra is resolution.
The next part, Mr. Garing and myself are requesting the adoption of the twenty twenty-six capital projects asset plan and the five-year bus replacement plan. In addition, a resolution is necessary to set forth the following appropriation amounts, levies, and tax rates for the twenty twenty-six budget, subject to the Department of Local Government Finance approval. The education fund appropriation is seventeen million. The operations fund appropriation is eight million, one hundred thousand, and the levy, sorry, I don't know if you guys want me to read all of this, I know what's in here. The levy is at six million, five hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars for a rate of sixty-five cents. The debt service fund appropriation is six million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars with a levy at six million, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars for a rate of sixty cents. For a total budget of thirty-two million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, a total tax levy of twelve million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total tax rate of one dollar and twenty-six cents. Again, I will ask for that to be adjusted to make sure that our tax rate is, is neutral. I want to make that very clear to the board and to the public that we always ask for the max and back it down with our Department of Local Government Finance representative to make sure that our tax rate stays neutral.
When you say neutral, that's a dollar?
Yes. It's a dollar point zero, zero two six, I think. Yeah.
A first, second, discussion, and board action, or vote, sorry.
I'll move.
Mr. Simonsen, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brennan, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Next is statements from the public, and we have no one signed up for that, so we'll move on to old business. I don't see anything for that. So, we'll move on to new business, item B, food services presentation.
Would you like to stand right there?
That's good news.
Okay, perfect. So, I just want to take a moment to welcome Jessica DeFosse to our meeting. We've talked a lot about the amazing things she's been doing with her department throughout my, my whole tenure here so far, but I also know that there was a couple of questions along the way, and so Jessica's here to kind of talk us through like what's happening, what's going on. And I know that she's a little bit anxious, but she's going to do great, but I'm going to stand up here with her just to kind of talk through or jump in as needed. And this is a discussion, it's back and forth, so ask questions along the way as you see fit, okay? With that being said, I'll hand her the clicker.
Oh, yeah.
Press the down button to advance, and you're good to go.
I mean, kids still get free lunch, right?
They do.
Okay. So, outside of that, you're funding? And state and federal?
Yeah. The federal only pays for a lunch reimbursement.
Okay.
And they do not pay the full price right now, since we're CEP. They pay a percentage.
Does that change?
Does it change? No.
Okay.
It'll stay that way for four years.
Sorry, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So, we have a lot going on, and you guys know, if you go to the grocery store, I mean, food's outrageous right now, and we're feeding eight. In twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, we had COVID, so we got really good reimbursement from federal. They paid the full amount. So, that's a huge difference when we lost that money. We did have thirty employees last year. We only have twenty-five now. Any questions on?
Are you able to operate on twenty-five?
It's, it's been very, very stressful. Yes, we can.
I had a question for you, Jessica. Who is your vendor for your food? Do you?
Uh, we have multiple. There's US Foods. We have Piazza Produce. Klosterman. That's about it.
So, I know that the milk was bid out. Is all these products bid?
We run through a co-op.
The co-op does the bidding?
Yeah, and they do all the bidding. That's part of their, and a lot of school corporations go through. It's called Click.
Okay, thank you. You have twenty-five employees, right? Is that twenty-five governed by what? By number of students or amount of money that you have in the cafeteria account?
Twenty-five employees?
Yeah.
I have to do a meals per labor hour.
So, there's a formula for you to say?
There is a formula.
This is how many employees you can have?
Yes.
Or should I?
And I'll show you in one of the slides.
Okay, all right.
Down. You got it?
So, we are CEP, and we want CEP last year. Now, federal and state, they only pay a percentage. And for paid students, they're only paying thirty-six point ninety-one. So, example, if we got two thousand lunches, we will receive one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. That's for the free rate. Then for the paid rate, we'll only get seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
I'll help a little vocabulary. So, when we speak about free, those are students that have filled out the paperwork for free and reduced and were approved. Those who are paid either did not fill out that paperwork or were not approved. So, as you see the difference, we have a certain percentage of our students that are on free or reduced lunch. That's where that percent comes from, and we're going to dig that, dig deeper into that in just a second. And then also, those who are paid are just those who did not fill out the paperwork or did not qualify. That's what the term paid means, and we get a certain percent of the reimbursement based on that. And we're going to dig into that with future slides, but that kind of helps with the vocabulary.
Can I ask just for clarification, some of the acronyms like CEP? What?
Yeah.
What does that stand for?
Yes, that's Community Eligibility Provision.
Okay.
That's what the state calls it.
Okay, thank you.
And this is our ADP. This is our average daily participation for each school for breakfast and lunch. As you can see, Laurel does amazing. We struggle at some schools to get the kids to eat breakfast and lunch, and that makes a huge difference on our, our funding, because we need them to participate.
So, I think this is important to note, like, this is the number of kids who are going through the line and buying the breakfast or the lunch. Keep in mind, the higher that number, the more beneficial it is to us, particularly for those students who have qualified for free and reduced lunch. Everyone gets free lunch right now under CEP, but those who have qualified for free and reduced, we get a higher reimbursement for those who have filled out the paperwork and submitted it and were approved. Everyone's free, but our reimbursement amount changes based on whether they are approved or not approved for free and reduced lunch. I know that sounds interesting, because why would you apply? But that's why we desperately need families to apply, because it changes our multiplier. It changes that number incredibly about our reimbursement when we say, here are the kids that need it the most, and are they eating the lunch? And so, everyone's free, but the rates are different, so the more kids that eat breakfast and lunch, participate, the better off we are.
So, here's just a little example of each school enrollment. So here's just a little example of each school enrollment, how many eat breakfast, how many do not. Like the top line Mount Carmel, there is a hundred and four that eat breakfast and a hundred and eighteen that don't. They either pack or they don't want it. So that affects our account. Um, we want CEP because I figured that all the kids would get a tray, like, it would be beneficial for both. But it's kind of, it's hurting us in a in a way. Um, at the bottom, so I gave you guys a little price, what you can see from state. I broke it down, like, uh, for breakfast, federal pays two forty-six for breakfast, but we are only getting a dollar fifty-five. That's for the free rate. And then there's the lunch, they would be paying four sixty, but we only get a percentage, so that's two ninety. So we're losing.
So let, help me understand, maybe on your chart, like, for this example, why would you want more students to participate and eat lunch or breakfast if um, if it's, are we getting enough reimbursement to to pay for that value or maybe, or for our cost at least? Or how does that impact us if it's more or less?
The more, the more we have I know it's very confusing, the more we have, the percentage changes. The more the kids eat, the more federal money we get. Yes.
I don't know if this is right or not, but I'm gonna ask or say it. Whether they get lunch or not, you have to prepare for every kid to eat, so we have to pay for it. But if they don't go, in in theory.
Yeah, somewhat, yeah.
But if they don't go through the line, we're not getting, we're not getting reimbursed for it.
Right.
So you have to plan for more than what we're getting reimb, that's where
Yeah.
we're at a loss.
Yeah.
Am I saying that correctly?
We're at a loss at two places. You're you're not wrong, we actually, the team has done an incredible job of shifting the morning count so that we're not overcooking, they've done a lot of work, but here is the key. When you look at our students that have qualified for free lunch, so who filled out the paperwork, took the time to do it and qualified. For lunch, we get two dollars and ninety cents for each one of the clicks as those kids come through. For those students who did not fill out the paperwork, for whatever reason, either they didn't feel like they had to, because we got free lunch anyways, or they don't feel like they qualify, name the reason. For our paid students, that's who this is, notice the percentage difference, we only get sixteen cents. So our real need is twofold. One, we need more families that do qualify to fill out that paperwork. We've seen a drop in that, a considerable drop in those who took the time to fill out the paperwork. And we understand why, because there's this feeling of why would I, I get free lunch anyways? But the problem is for us to save this program and have any hope at all, we have to have those students get the checkmark on that paperwork so that we get a higher reimbursement. The difference, when you see the cost per lunch, you'll see that reimbursement has to be able to cover the remaining portion of the paid kids' lunch so that it all comes out in the wash. Right, so we only get sixteen cents for a student that is not free or reduced from the government, but you'll see a lunch costs a dollar fifty. Right? So a dollar fifty, we get two ninety for them, and then we only get sixteen cents, so it has to come out that way. So what you've seen over time is over time, we've seen less participation, less people filling out the paperwork, and therefore, less reimbursement. But yet, we're still feeding those that, those who are eating at the sixteen cent rate. They're still getting the same lunch as everyone else, of course. But you can see the difference right there, and how quickly that could add up when you're not able to make up the difference by having enough kids. When we first started talking, when I first got here and Jess produced this idea, fantastic idea, it still was. I know, I I know how you feel, but it was still taking care of our community. Our our free and reduced percentages were extremely high. And so we knew we'd get a lot of reimbursement at this rate, it made a lot of sense. What has happened is that people stopped filling out the paperwork. Same population, same people, you know, that that hasn't changed. We're still, we're still the same folks. But the difference is, those who just haven't bothered, we've dropped like two hundred and something families that just haven't bothered or don't feel like they qualify. And so you see the reimbursement change, and so that's why you've seen over time, along with inflation of food, an account that has has been really hit hard. Does that make sense? And I want, I I want Jess, I want you to answer those questions, but I want to make sure everybody saw, that is the, that is the big difference.
When do they fill out that paper? Do they, I know we have a lot of online uh registration.
After July first. After July first, they had, they get, and we we do a campaign. We push it out, please fill it out, please fill it out, all the things.
But um, but you can still go to school uh and register online, but you wouldn't necessarily get this paper, correct? Or is that paper online?
It's an online registration, you're correct. Now, our our offices could help you for sure. But like, maybe ten years ago, everything was that paper and we we'd submit it, but that's definitely shifted, Jess, go ahead.
Yeah, they they apply on Meal Magic.
Are those enrollment numbers right? Because when I add those up.
It's pretty, it's, L E S is a little higher than
Nineteen, I got nineteen forty-eight, is, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong. So we are at, we sit around eighteen fifty-eight, eighteen sixty on a given day. There's a couple of numbers that are just a little bit higher than our October first count.
Yes, I prepared this in July.
I got a question.
Oh, okay, so that's probably why it was high.
Yes.
I I don't know how you all reach out to these parents. When I went to the Laurel PTO meeting last, I kind of explained this to them, because I think Dustin or someone had talked about they're not filling out this paperwork. And I explained to them, you know, even if you do qualify or don't qualify, fill out that paperwork because it's beneficial to the school. And none of them had heard this before. And so however we're communicating with them is not working.
So on the registration, if I remember correctly, I can, as a parent, can either fill out the meal or I can bypass it completely to complete my registration, correct? I don't have
I believe so, yes.
I think you even have to to basically opt no if you do not want to apply, right?
In final forms.
Yeah, so you you have to hit this form at some point, right?
I mean, it's down on the computer now, the guys that register, if they don't understand that piece.
I guess my question is
I don't think you can make it mandatory, you can't make them
No, I I understand.
It has to be optional.
But why aren't they filling it out?
Yeah.
Is my question, I guess.
Historically, now, I can only go back to Northwest days to give you any history, same kind of concept. Any of our buildings that ended up with free lunch saw a dramatic drop in those in those numbers, a dramatic drop. Mike? Oh. Oh, fantastic. So Toby Witt is is incredible, Toby, get up here. So Toby helps us with our free and reduced lunch percentages as well as final forms. Uh, Toby, take it away.
The question was during student registration.
The microphone.
Yeah, I figure I talk loud enough anymore. So the question was, during student registration, do students have to, or do parents have to complete that uh free reduced lunch application? The answer is no, because they can't until July first. And so, and it's also an entirely separate system, it's not embedded and it can't be embedded. So we do say, hey, if you think you qualify for free reduced lunch, we really want you to do this, here's the link on how to do that. And uh, and then it's up to the parent after they're finished uh to complete that process. I just wanted to clarify.
That's a question I've had in the past, is, you know, getting the notification out, letting them know, as Greg said, the impact on the school, but reassuring them that it's anonymous. There's nothing to lose here.
No, no, that that list goes only to those who have to know it.
Right.
I mean, it absolutely doesn't go beyond that.
It's not Jessica or Toby or anybody else going through this list and seeing personal information, correct? I mean, you get a report.
Qualified or not qualified?
Yeah, it says free or reduced.
But what worries me a little bit is what Greg was saying, where there seems to be a communication gap in part of the county. So I mean, from a futuristic standpoint, that it may be a need for at the end of the school year
Yeah, I mean, we put it on Facebook.
Yeah.
We put it in our weeklies.
At the end of the day, if it didn't work, it didn't work, but but
Yeah, yeah.
we're all looking for more ideas, because obviously, the ideas are going up to a glass ceiling of some sort.
Yes.
And not getting through, and that's fair.
Right.
Um, but we definitely need it does have to be two-way, right? We we need that responsiveness as well.
And when I was on the library board at Laurel, well, at at Brooklyn Laurel, now, we knew that people in that area had no computer coverage. And most of them came actually to the parking lot to utilize the computer service. So I'm just wondering, you know, just, I may be drifting a little bit with this, but I can see a problem, a little bit of a problem based on what Greg was saying.
What if you did it like on back-to-school night, after that July first mark, and you had the parents in the building? And you had a few computers set up for those, because Kim's right, it is a huge issue in rural Franklin County with internet. And you had that right there. I don't know.
And we do, but more is absolutely important. All that matters is it's not working.
Yeah.
Right? And so like, we have to keep chasing that next thing, because the truth of the matter is, we are at the brink, and I truly mean the brink of saying, we can no longer do CEP because we can't afford to continue. Uh, and I'm not, that's no threat at all, it's just, that is where we are um holistically.
Can parents still do that, like, today? When, I know it starts July one, but when
They can still fill it out, and that gives us a future focus, um, for sure. Um, our October count is kind of locked in, but them filling it out is only beneficial to them. There there's no drawback for them whatsoever. Uh, and and it's also, at this point, even still beneficial to us in all kinds of areas, so it's still worth it. Um, but we are gonna have to climb this mountain that we have.
They just, the ones I had spoken to just had no idea that it was a benefit to the school, that they just didn't understand that.
Jess?
Jessica, I had one question with with the number of students that I'm seeing there where it says, um, either don't eat or pack lunch. Are any of those, now, this may be a very ignorant question, I'm so sorry, but are any of those students that have filled out the paperwork and they just choose not to eat?
Uh, maybe.
Could be. I truly don't know why they're not getting it. I I do know a lot of kids still pack.
So you click every day? Do you click every day?
Oh, yeah. Yep, every school.
Every day?
Yes.
And knowing that
And I watch that daily. How many are we feeding? What was that?
Knowing that age and everything I've heard is the food is phenomenal, the food is great. We're also talking kids. So mom and dad may not realize that they are not choosing to go through the line. And that we take our numbers down.
If any of our elementary students were to walk up and not have something in hand and not go through the line, that would trigger some alerts for our staff. They, that doesn't fly well at the elementary level. And so there definitely be communication, hey, what's going on here? Really, once you get to the secondary level, is when they don't intervene as often, because obviously, they're getting a bit older and you don't want to ask all the questions, because there's a lot of things happening right there. But the elementary level, that would absolutely trigger all kinds of notices, but at the high school level, not so much, right? Whether you do or don't go through.
So in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-five, we purchased some equipment because we had money in the account, so I'm like, okay, we're gonna buy some equipment. Um, we didn't do it in the past years, but equipment is very expensive for a kitchen. It runs ten thousand to a hundred, just for one item, and we have five kitchens. Here's something food cost over the years. I do know recently, um, every food item that we purchase has went up seven cents. That's everything that we buy, mashed potatoes, chicken nuggets, even the plasticware, the kids have to have silverware, it's up four cents a piece. They drop them all the time, so we gotta refill them. It's just the little things that add up. We got it down to fifty to sixty thousand a month now. But it's been very stressful.
And I think it's also important to note, everyone's felt that inflation. Everyone's feeling that grocery bill right now, and have have been for a while. It's no different for Jess and her team, with that, that's definitely one of the issues that we've been facing.
Here's our repairs and labor, repairs have went down tremendously. Um, we're getting pretty high, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four, so that's a big, huge uh difference as well when our maintenance can fix it themselves instead of outsourcing.
And I think that's huge.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I know Martin watches the, watches the board meetings, but our hire of Martin Earlywine and his team, we've seen a huge shift from outsourcing to doing things ourselves. He has been a phenomenal addition, and you can see his numbers right there.
Labor over the years, it pretty much runs about the same. We, I got it down to fifty to fifty-five thousand a month right now. And that's monitoring labor, um, making sure they only get so many hours and
They don't work full-time, right? They don't get any benefits?
Um, the five, there's five managers that get benefits.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the rest do not get, they don't get any, no benefits. This is our federal reimbursement, what we've received. Uh, currently, we need about a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand to keep going monthly. August, we didn't hit the hundred mark, and then, but September, we did. Just a little example of what. And that's only for food and labor. When you start throwing in the equipment in there, repairs, we're going in the red. This is per each school. Um, I like to show my managers where they are per school. So um, as you can see, there's some that are profitable and some that are not.
Why is that?
No idea. I, maybe participation for Mount Carmel, all, a lot of them pack. So that affects our the ladies are there to make the food, but we don't the kids are just not getting it.
And also the students that fill out the paperwork.
Yes.
Right, remember, those reimbursements matter at the different rates. We need families to fill it out, and then those those students to be the ones that eat the most often, because then they can make the difference for those otherwise, which is how CEP is supposed to balance. Um, we're just out of balance right now because we've seen our our rate of uh free and reduced drop because of the paperwork.
So what has been implemented since July, when I so I do a cycle menu now. I monitor labor per meals per labor hour, it's a, it's a true legitimate, um, however you want to say it.
It's a former.
Found the cheapest meals they make that are still healthy and good for the kids. I created a master list of supplies for the managers before. Um, I noticed like one manager would order this nugget, and one would order another, so we was never the same through schools. And sometimes, those nuggets were two dollars more. So I said, here's your number, this is what you're gonna order. Um, I did, with one of the grants I received, we got the kids some incentive. Um, prizes, like if you get a tray, um, it's just little things. Or there's like a sticker under a tray, or, um, we got decorations to make it more appealing for the kids to come in, like, hey, come try this out. I'm constantly looking for grants and reaching out for state, reaching out to state for help and guidance.
Are the schools not, do they not follow the same meal line as all the other schools? For instance, if I go to Mount Carmel or B E S, at lunch, they're having the same meal.
They're supposed to. Now, middle school and high school is different, they offer more. You go to the high school, there's like eleven to fourteen options that they can get daily.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because you're ordering maybe too hectic, I, you know, this is your business, not mine, I I, you know, obviously, there's pizza. But you got people ordering, five different people ordering different things, why isn't one person ordering all the things for five different people?
But that's why I made a master list.
The managers have an inventory, I think he's asking, like, why not have one person do all the ordering, whether then leave it to chance? But is is it, in your mind, that the managers there have an inventory and they know what they need next?
Yes. And I'll show you in some slides. Um, got labor down and I got food costs down. Here's like an example what the managers have. This is the the cycle menu, and it tells them every, like, the numbers they're supposed to order. Here's the better, this one's a little better. So they all have this master list, and they can only order these numbers on here.
Do we feed kids who have no money and come in and say, listen, I don't have any money today? Do they get to eat?
Every child gets a tray. Now, if they want extra, that's
Do they have, I mean, they wouldn't pay for it that day, obviously, I'm just wondering. Do they have, I mean, they wouldn't pay for it that day, obviously. I'm just wondering how free could that is?
Nobody's paying right now.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I have a question. For it to constitute as a tray, do they have to get like every item? Or if they don't like get the fruit, does that still count as a tray?
So we're offer versus serve. So the kids have to get three components. And one of those components have to be a fruit. So they have to get a half cup of fruit.
Okay.
And then they can get a sandwich, like a chicken sandwich. That's your grain and that's your meat. So that's three. They do not have to get a milk. We have to offer it though. We have to put it out like, you can have this if you want it.
But if they weren't to get, let's, I'm just asking. If they weren't to get a fruit, then it unfortunately would not count as.
A meal.
A meal.
Worse than that, ready for that, I mean, I learned so much from Jess. Let's just talk about the high school in particular. What I learned in the spring of last year, and we made some quick corrections, is that we were having high school students just go through with a chicken patty. And then their parents were paying for it as an à la carte item because it didn't meet the requirement for free lunch. And I don't know that their parents recognized that. So we started making some moves so that they could still enjoy the free lunch because they pay a buck and a half for the chicken sandwich out of their parents' money or they do free lunch, right? And the difference is, did you grab the raisins, right? So then this team moved the raisins. Literally, I watched it happen where, where one of the servers, the kid came up, she goes, if you take raisins, it's free. Kids like, I'll take raisins. And that, and so just little changes make a significant difference.
Jessica, do you have flavored milk for the kids?
We do. We have strawberry and chocolate.
And you said we can't afford whole milk yet.
Whole milk?
Yeah.
I don't think that, that's not an option.
The fat content.
Yeah. Fat, sodium, I have to watch.
Been working on legislation to get that passed back into schools.
I don't think it's passed yet as far as whole milk.
I think I'll skip this one.
Well, I think, take a moment. What is your next slide more about this, like the math?
So this is a price list, what we pay. Some things are a little crazy, like a pear cup. We pay 63 cents. Like the child has to get a fruit. So there's some things on here I had to take off. I'm sure if you have children, you've heard about it. I had to take off, take out barbecue, honey mustard and sweet and sour sauce because they're 14 to 16 cents per cup and some kids were getting three cups. We're not making any money on that. That was a free, like, here you go. So now it's just ketchup and mustard. Because I just, I just can't. And then I had to stop making spice cake for a while. I just put it back on the menu because it's 46 cents to make all the ingredients per child. So when you add all these little components up, it's just getting.
And, and I just want, you got to understand her, her heart is breaking with all these moves. Like I've watched this happening for her because this is so critical to her to know that we may not have a kid eat as much because they don't love this versus that. It's actually really difficult for Jess to kind of walk that path. But that's leadership, right? It's hard. But some of the changes are simple too. So over here you see a fruit mixed cup at 68 cents versus a mixed fruit where we scoop it. That's 36 cents. So small changes can make a big difference, but, but it is not unheard and also unfelt to know that some of these changes do have impact.
Jess, tell us about the carrots. That's the one that blew me away.
Oh.
The packaged carrots and the, we bike full carrots down and have to.
Yeah, yes, we do. I don't have.
The carrots here is 18 cents.
I believe it was 50 cents for carrots.
That prepackaged.
Prepackaged, you know, prepackaged costs more. So I had to have the staff get a whole carrot now. They shave it off and cut it down because it's 18 cents.
And at the high school, that's expensive, things to throw, honestly.
I know, I know. So it's changes like that we've had to make. Just a little fun thing, did you know, like for a cheeseburger, it cost a dollar nine for us to make it without labor? That's just for the, the food, the burger, cheese, chicken patties, 81 cents. Just some little, little things, walking taco, that's a dollar 34. And here is the cost per student, per meal. This is what I got it down to. This is our cycle menu. The very top calzone, baked beans and mixed fruit, that's costing us a dollar 22. So I had to go through and pick where we can save the most money. And this is my.
I think this is incredibly powerful. When you think about that early slide about reimbursement rates, right? For our students that did not fill out the paperwork, did not qualify, that we get how many cents? Those 16 cents. That student's pizza cruncher meal is a dollar 45, right? So this is what's happening. Then the students that are qualified, we get that full $2.60. It was something, it was, help me, help me.
At the top of my head.
246.
246.
290, sorry.
290.
Thank you. So 290, right? And you can see how we have to cover one with the other. But when you start getting out of balance, all of a sudden, all of a sudden your count starts to look a little bit different month to month, the month, the month, because you're out of balance for so long. So that's what's happening overall and, and still why we have to be very careful in what's happening next and where we go from here.
So the CEP doesn't, that might be a silly question, but it doesn't allow you to, let's say you didn't fill out the paper and you are a paid lunch payer and you're only getting 16 cents. Can you not set a rate and cha- charge them? Because it won't allow you, you have to use the extra.
So for your non, it's a great, actually, that's a great question. For your non-CEP schools, that's where that kind of plays in, right? So a student comes through that is free, did the paperwork, then they get reimbursed at that same rate. And then the student does pay, the parents pay those dollars and that's how the account is taken care of. It's just, it's the reimbursement rate that's tough.
And there in the green, food costs per month per student. So breakfast, lunch is $26 a month per student. And then you have your breakfast is 25. This is what I was talking about, the meals per labor hour. There's a lot of data that has to go into it that tells me how many staff are needed and how many hours they should be working. That goes by how many meals they're preparing. So every month it's different. Every month I have to say, okay, this month you have to cut two hours. You got to watch.
Are we losing workers over that?
Yeah, it's, it's very hard. I mean, what do you do? It's been, it's been a nightmare since July, honestly. But I have to, I have to, I have to do it. So here's the real story. Paperwork work is not getting filled out for the free and reduced, which helps the percentage rateage, the food prices have increased. And if free and reduced applications and participation do not increase, this can't keep running this way. Just the honest truth.
So it's going to go back to everybody paying for lunch?
Yes. And we seen, I didn't really truly notice until July and I'm like, what is going on? Because I thought, well, this is amazing. Kids are going to eat.
And to Jess's credit, one of the things, I don't want you to think she wasn't paying attention, that's not true. It's the, the timeline of reimbursement is so late. Like we are still waiting for reimbursements that's like months old. Like it just takes so long that by the time you realize, man, oh, man, that didn't come through the way I thought it would, it was, the train was out of the station. And so we've made some significant corrections. We have to be as honest and real with the board as possible that this may not be sustainable at the semester or at the end of the year depending. Just because there are other corporations that are able to use operation dollars to do this. We are not in a position to use operation dollars to sustain the CEP program. It just isn't really feasible. And so obviously we are in constant communication about where are we now? Where are we now? Where are we now? And then where are we going? So Jess has a heck of a lift.
Yeah, I think she's done a good job, but it's just amazing to me that last year at this time, we had $383,000 in cafeteria. Right now, we only have 50. So that's $330,000 that's been lost due to, due to these changes.
Well, there were some equipment purchases, right?
Yeah.
That was about 70,000 maybe?
70,000.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, it seems like that's, that's a huge, how can we exist? You're right. How can we continue to exist?
So you think Jessica, you'd be better off to get out of this for you and your employee? Go ahead. You're all right.
Make everybody bring their lunch.
For, you know, I mean, there's so much turmoil right now with cafeteria. It's like because I have to micromanage.
So would you be able to serve better meals to the students if we went back to paying?
I could add more stuff because, yeah, we'd get the full pay.
What if, so we'll call it a last ditch effort. It's not how you're communicating, it's what, and I'm not saying you. It's not how you're communicating, but what you're communicating. Because I, I see the emails and it just says, apply here. Have we ever laid out like a, here's what you're going to need, the information you're going to need? This is how the process works, you know, this is what you're going to, it's going to take you five minutes. You know, something like that. Not just go here to apply because they don't, they're like, I don't have time, I'll do that later. They just never do it because they don't know what to expect.
I was thinking the same, Kevin, around like what are the, maybe they don't know the guidelines or why waste my time? I wouldn't qualify, you know?
And I'm pretty sure Kendra Sparks on the weekly Wednesday, she put it in there, like step by step, how they need to do it.
For the last couple of months, she's been.
What's the salary, what's the hourly wage for a cafeteria worker?
Starting out is 13.05. So that's where we struggle too, like no benefits.
Yeah, they're averaging how many hours per?
They cannot get over 5.50, like, so some are getting four.
A day.
Yeah.
I think down in comparison, like for areas, is area schools, do you have any input on what they're doing in the cafeteria?
I know they're in the same boat, like me and other directors talk.
Right.
I know some schools who are not CEP, they have to charge the kids a lot more now just because of food costs.
Right.
That's what I was wondering, how much is a school lunch just?
What would it be now?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I think Misty said we're paying.
Last year was 245. It would have to be 350 or more.
I think we're paying $3 a day at Batesville is what Misty said.
It would have to be, yeah, they're not CEP. Me and her talk a lot, so I know.
Makes you wonder how many kids eat lunch at that.
I just wonder if people realize that it could be $3.50, let's say, if they wouldn't go fill out the form because they probably do qualify. And, you know, if we put an end to this program, then how many people are going to go apply that applied, that qualified in the first place, but?
Well, you'll, you'll know because if you go back to right before we had the program, our participation rate in the paperwork process was significantly different than it is now. That, that's a great measurement of what would we be returning to as there's a kind of a reaction to this, to this mode. We, we always want kids to eat, there's no question. And we want to, we want to take care of our families, no question. And so there are programs for those things. We had planned and hoped, we had planned that this would be able to be sustainable for a long time. But, but we will make sure the kids still eat. That's, that's critical.
I think it's, I mean, it's just, they've gotten accustomed to the free lunch so they don't take that extra step anymore to fill out any paperwork. Why, why would you?
That was my thought and, and I had asked this earlier, but just to clarify, I mean, if, if everybody went home tonight and filled out that paperwork, would that make a difference tomorrow or next week? Or is quickly is that, or what are your thoughts?
So October 1 is passed, but what is still available to us is the future thinking. Can we sustain this? Is, is there hope in the future? If we get through X amount of months, do we know that it's going to come around? Like our ability to sustain this for the future will be very much dependent on that, that, that change. What you're describing right there, that change will be the thing that will be convincing to say, yes, we can. Or look, guys, it's just not possible.
So any change would have to be done before the spring?
So any change would have to be done pretty quickly because it would help our planning. Not because of the technicality portion of it, but like, are we going to be able to sustain this? What do our numbers look like? Because here's the truth, the program's not built for our current participation rate. It's built for the participation rate that we had when we started it. The 200 kid difference or so is, is a significant change.
But if, if you had 200 or so that did the paperwork and that number changed, would you be reimbursed very quickly? I mean, would you see that? Would you be able to feel that and know that it's going to work or not to be able to make?
With the changes she's made, if we sustain the changes she's made and what you're describing, it's possible.
Okay. I, I love the program. It's so amazing to, I can see why you love it, right? To be able to say that we're feeding every kid like this. So I would, would love to see it continue. I'm sure you would too, but, yeah.
And it's with government going on right now, the shutdown.
Shutdown.
Yeah. Just like for our federal reimbursement, we still don't have August yet. We're in October. That money, we spent that money on labor and food. And we don't have the money for it. They didn't, they haven't gave it to us yet.
You know, we're providing a benefit, obviously on one hand, but on the other hand, we're choking ourselves because we're, we just don't work for 13 bucks, hard time with no benefits.
Well, I want to thank you, first off, for your leadership, right? I know that you had a heavy lift and, and coming into this, this year, you've taken it on and sometimes taken it to the chin because you know change is hard. So I want to say thank you. No matter what the future holds, I know where your heart is and is to take care of our kids. So thank you for coming tonight. I know this is not your favorite thing in the world to do, but I thought you did an exceptional job. I thought you did an exceptional job. Absolutely. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Jess. You did a great job.
Thanks, Jess.
And I appreciate seeing the menu every week in the Wednesday newsletter. I mean, it lets me know what the kids are doing.
See, some, I mean, some food's still good. I mean, we still got homemade stuff on there.
I said this week was a great week. I don't have to pack lunch once a season.
It's just hard when there's so many kids. What do you want?
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
That was information only, so we will move on to energy savings contract.
So this is just some legalese around our bidding process that we've talked to the board about coming. We knew this was on its way. The concept of the energy savings contract is that many of these projects that we have talked about that came out of the performance assessment, when we're done with them, they will save us energy. And therefore it falls under this, this particular type of bidding process. And so ultimately what I'm asking is that, that I'm requesting permission to advertise a request for qualifications, request for proposals for energy savings contract for our building projects that will require a first, second discussion and vote.
Please explain that just a little bit more, please.
Absolutely. So I want you to imagine that the words here were just a bidding for the, the site improvement projects that we've been talking about from performance. That's, that's what we're after. It falls under the energy savings contract because many of those things that would, would improve would also save us energy. There's two types of bidding processes. One is the energy savings process and the other is the other type of process. The energy savings process is a much easier process for us to get these bids first and be able to start looking at what projects can we do with the bond dollars versus the other type of projects, which could be any kind of other project you name, which is why there's a lot more rules and a lot more specifications around the bidding process.
Example, electric.
Yep. So it's electric at BES. If we were to come in and provide electric, it would then save us energy because we'd be more efficient. It's a great question.
Looking for a first, second discussion and vote.
I'll move to approve.
Ms. Brennan, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Wilson?
Any other discussion?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0. Administrator of counseling services, job description.
Yes, as I've talked to the board about, in an effort to see if we can get other candidates for the high school counseling position, we're taking a look at what an administrative position could look like. There are some jobs that they would do at an administrative level. They wouldn't just, it wouldn't be the same job as what we typically have. But to see if there's other candidates out there. Right now, we're still seeking candidates. So today it's just a job description that we're bringing to the board. I hope at some point to bring you a candidate that says, yes, we want to be at the high school because we know that that's definitely a need that we have. So this is an effort to seek out fully certified candidates. We have some candidates that are in the pool that aren't yet fully certified. And we may have to come back to them, not for this position, but for this traditional. We have some candidates that are in the pool that aren't yet fully certified, and we may have to come back to them, not for this position, but for this traditional high school counselor position. But right now, we need to give it a shot to get a fully certified folks, because that's what our corporation needs, is another certi- a fully certified counselor.
Um, are we still, do we still do the, uh, North Central accreditation?
Yes, at the high school level, they do the, um, oh, goodness, what is it? It, I don't know, it goes by a different name.
It's probably, it's probably.
N C A.
What?
It's N C A.
North Central?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, 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 thank you, yep.
It's on kids, that's on some, when they graduate, I think it's on their diploma.
Right, but what I'm asking is, since we don't have a ca- a full-time accredited counselor.
Okay.
Well, are we still, when is our next review coming in? Are we in a hurry to get this done and blah, 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 blah?
So I'm in a hurry to get this done because it's good for kids.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not necessarily in a hurry to get it done for the accreditation, we do have a review coming up, I couldn't tell you that, but I can get it for you. But, um, whether or not a full-time counselor is a part of that accreditation, I'd have to dig a little bit deeper. It may be, it may very well be, I just had to dig a little deeper, but I will, and I can get that to you.
Again, looking for a first, second discussion.
So moved.
Ms. Foster, second, Ms. Holman? Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. High school registrar job description.
Simply put, Dustin Garing is recommending a title of job description change, and that is all that it is. It's not a dollar change at all, it's just simply a more reflective title to the work that our current person is doing. If you've ever been in our counseling department, you know what an exceptional job that Shelby does for us in that position. And we've been in discussion with her around, what are, you know, what are your responsibilities, are they different than other high school secretaries, and what makes them different? And so in collaboration with, um, Shannon New, they came up with this idea that that the title itself, not anything around salary or any benefits or anything, would be the change. And that would be to the registrar position. That is literally the only change.
Is she the one that does the transcripts with kids?
Mm-hmm, yes.
She works at graduation, yeah.
Yes, uh, looking for first, second discussion and vote.
I so moved to accept.
Ms. Wilson, do we have a second? Ms. Brennan, any other discussion?
I would just like to add on that description, Dustin, I mean, I'm familiar with the, what the ladies do over there, obviously. It's a tough job, these descriptions are 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 great in in nature, but we all know that it's a group project. I mean, it's really a group project because these needs and these demands happen so frequently, and sometimes they they just double up on everybody. Everybody's gotta be a te- team player in order to make it go, so, yeah.
I've been around a lot of schools, we all know that the secretaries run the place, let's not pretend that's not true.
No other discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. And twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar.
So I'm bringing forth a twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar, it reflects, uh, teacher flex day in December and in May. It also reflects the, uh, Connersville or Fayette County calendar because of our Career Center students. Um, and so with that, I'm bringing this forth, and then I could put it out to the community with board approval.
Looking for first, second discussion and vote.
I'll move on to school calendar.
Mr. Simonsen, do we have a second? Holman, any discussion?
I had noticed one thing, um, and it it is similar to our current school year's calendar, but, um, a spring recess day. I, is that, I think that's, is that a reflection because of, um, our, because of Connersville, because of the occasional calendar? Or is that just a snow makeup date?
So it it it's, sometimes mirroring year to year, oftentimes mirroring around the Easter holiday, oftentimes it's around that space. But it's also a space we could have another snow makeup day, and so it's not necessarily just linked to Connersville only, but rather it gives us that other opportunity.
Okay.
For a makeup day.
As far as, um, I mean, another day off, though, if if we don't have the snow, I guess, right?
Yeah.
It's not, it's still allowing us to.
Yeah, so we have a hundred and seventy-seven days gone into the calendar because of our three waiver days that we got last year. And so that day reflects the fact that we're at one seventy-seven.
The only other question I received was graduation basically being two weeks after the last day, I said, well, Memorial Day.
What do you do?
Yeah, you have to jump over that, so, if anyone has a question about that.
If you look where these holidays land, that that particular year, that's a tough school calendar, uh, just the way things lay out, and it doesn't always go that way, but having done a lot of school calendars, that this year in particular is a tough one.
No other discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Next item is other. Don't believe we have any, and then we're on to superintendent's report.
Well, I will not drag this on, just a couple of things, and then, um, first and foremost, I'll start with our very quick committee update. The board has been asking for, like, what's happening in these committees, what's, you know, what's been going on, and so we we just did a bit of a, there it is, sorry about that. Bit of a synopsis, and please jump in, all my committee members, a- as you see fit, but just kind of what's happened in these committees that we've been in since January. And keep in mind, some of them only meet once every two months, so it may not be as fruitful as somebody think it is, because they're only meeting ever so often. And the academics committee, uh, Shannon New leads that charge, and they've been doing a lot of, they did some test score analysis, as well as some staffing updates, kind of a sense of how does that work and how does that function? In our culture committee, uh, we are in the process of commit- creating a survey for our staff to be a bit more reflective of what's happening out there. And so we have a set of questions that we're, we're one meeting away from sending out, just want to kind of finalize those. Our E C A and athletics groups, and please jump in, honestly, I I just kind of push through, but jump in. Our E C A and athletics, we took a lot of time wa- walking through the field naming process and procedure, and then also quite a bit of discussion around hall and wall of fame procedures. Also around kind of future dream thinking, around is there a field house at any point in the future, and what could it look like, and what do those needs look like? So that's been part of that discussion as well. Under master facility, we, uh, went through the the, uh, binder from, uh, our assessment and looked at which one of those are we seeking bids on? And which ones are either for the future or just not really something we're gonna chase, or something we're gonna do ourself. So we went through that project list together, more of a report than anything else. We discussed the future of center campus, what would this look like, and what are some ideas, and and what's all possible there. And then we also looked at a need for some signage on one oh one, and what's possible there to, uh, maybe capture the eye of those headed to the lake to say, hey, there's a a a really beautiful school campus right here, and what could that mean for my family? So a lot of discussion around that. Under marketing and community, uh, we are in the process of establishing our business partner program. We have the window clings for our level one business partner program, they're in hand, uh, we just, uh, after our next meeting, we'll start getting those out. And then lastly, uh, with the help of Daniel Ward, um, uh, we've started a campaign called F C C S C On The Rise. And so we're gonna see a lot more promotion around that from Daniel and some of the work he's been doing, he has some really nice logos and things like that coming, uh, he's been doing some incredible work. Our finance committee, and Kendra, I'll just read these unless you want to jump in, okay? Um, they did a session on school finance, kind of one oh one, uh, a discussion of Senate Bill one effects, and a discussion on the needs for the current and future bond issues. I know that was very fast, but at the same time, I also know that we are using the minutes here. Any questions or comments for a committee before I get to my other report? All right.
I'll just say, thank you, and, I mean, the committees are still young.
Yeah, yeah.
Finding their way, so we wanted to start giving these updates. And hopefully be more in-depth and in the, and a lot more fruition in the future.
I think so. All right, just a couple other items here, um, Jill Brock brought to my attention, one of her roles for us is kind of really watching student attendance and looking for different ways she can jump in. Something she noted, um, towards the end of this first quarter, that twenty-five percent of our students right now have a hundred percent attendance. That's pretty incredible, uh, across the board, nine weeks in, with all things considered. I also want to take a moment to, um, talk about some good news, Sarah passed along some good news, um, and so so this got passed to the board as well. But just quickly, um, they asked me to advise the school board of the vote taken on October ninth at a special meeting of the Franklin County Redevelopment Commission. The amount of eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents is being paid to the Franklin County Community Foundation to be used by the Franklin County Community School Corporation for its media campaign. So a lot of this is going right towards Daniel Ward and the work that he's doing. Chairperson Bill Shermer was impressed with the with the comments at the August F C R C meeting. Um, to note, the county auditor reported that the Franklin County Industrial Tiff District collected seventy-seven thousand dollars and some change, and twenty-four and fifteen thousand dollars matches that number. So this does reflect fifteen percent of that, uh, of those dollars. The residential Tiff District was just created in December of twenty-four, and according to consultant Nick Lawrence, the residential Tiff has four hundred thousand dollars in new assessments in twenty-five. Which should generate about four thousand dollars in taxes in twenty-six or twenty-seven, for fifteen percent of that is six hundred dollars. But meanwhile, the new homes are continuing to be built. Just to take a note, that they are, um, working with us and being very collaborative, we're very thankful that the full fifteen percent is coming our way, and we're using it to do a lot of the good work. So just a little, uh, update on that, wanted to pass that along to the community while I was the board. And then just lastly, I want to thank, uh, Trent for taking on the lead with our first program spotlight, jumped right in, I appreciate you very much. And also, big congratulations to our football team, uh, being a conference champ, first time, I think it was twenty years, that's pretty incredible. And then we're heading, uh, one more home game, and then we head into sectionals, and then we're, and we're taking off from there, so the the sky's the limit. And I I know they've been working incredibly hard, as well as all of our fall sports have been working incredibly hard. Uh, um, to see tennis take off with a bunch of brand-new seniors just out there having a good time, that was a lot of fun to see. I got a chance to see one of our soccer games and to see them out there, um, saw some wrestlers out there playing soccer, which I think is fantastic. Um, a little bit of a, a little more physicality to the game, if you will, and, uh, I got to see some cross-country runners doing some incredible things. Uh, just really neat to see all of the activities happening, and then got to see our volleyball teams playing really, really well, and, um, and definitely taking on the challenge. So that, I think that covered all the fall sports. I didn't, I didn't get a chance to see golf, uh, just this year, but I will in the future for sure. And I'll wrap up my report with that, sir.
Um, next is legislative updates. I don't have any, if anybody else has one, jump in. The only thing I will say, kind of on that note, because they will go over those things, is the regional I S B A, um, update dinners that's coming up. The one that we typically attend is Wednesday, November, uh, fifth. So if you are interested in attending, you need to let me, Dustin, or Kendra know, so we can get everyone registered for that. Does anyone have anything else? If not, as soon as I can get back to my agenda, we'll move forward. Uh, next is future agenda requests. Do we have any? Okay, uh, recognition and acknowledgements.
Nothing on my end, sir.
Anyone else? If not, we will adjourn. Next register school board meeting is six P M. Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five, at the Franklin County Administration Building, right here. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance.